Good evening and welcome to the regular Select Board meeting for February 24th. If you could please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business would be to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion would be in order to approve the February 10th Select Board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Open public comment. We don't have anyone here and it doesn't appear there's anyone on good stuff. I'll just say that varsity boys play Wednesday night. It'll be the only home playoff game at 7 o'clock. And this week, starting, they're playing right now, the high school has created the Arlen, Bloodworth, Stephen Morrow, Phantom, Pride Junior High Basketball Tournament. So it starts tonight and championship will be played March 1st. So it's certainly nice to watch junior high play, but also honoring two amazing people that have supported our community and our kids for a very long time and continue to do so. Alright, everyone's had an opportunity to sign the bills as they went around. And so, we talked about this last time, but Judy's gonna get additional information, the tax map maintenance proposal with the updates and charges, which is in your pocket.
So I did check into it and basically the quarterly fee is something that, we've had these people for quite a while managing our maps. It's always been consistent. So the lump sum figure that they gave us of the $3,000 is for web management. So the website that we have contains all those maps. They manage that. So that's like a contract, just like if you have a contract with somebody else and the contract's $1,000 and then you pay them a fee for doing other things. So that's what that fee is. And then the quarterly, which has increased this year, is when we, when property gets transferred in town and the assessors are notified, they do their thing and then they let the map company know and then they go out and update the maps that's on the website for those property changes. So if you're willing to approve it again?
And then did we figure out, I mean, one of the questions was about, I sell a house, I close on a house February 1st. When does that come from us to them? When does that get updated? Cause that seems to be the lag.
Once it closes and there's the title, when we get the, we record the title and the deed?
Yeah.
Then the assessors are notified of it.
And so how long from them to them does it take? Do we know?
It depends on how they choose to do it.
Is our, how current are our maps now? Or how far behind?
They should be current right now. Cause there was, I think, a lapse where there was quite a few that weren't updated.
Okay.
And I think they did like a big sweep and updated them. And now with the new appraisal coming through, they've had to go in, I think, and update, like they've been working with Tyler Technologies, to update everything so that the map is already in place before the appraisal starts. So everything's gonna be intact. So, and we, I don't think we've had too many sales lately in town either recently.
Well, I know there's a house that just closed this month. So I'm just curious, like, it'll be interesting to know how long it takes for that house then to get updated.
Right. Well, like I said, once she records the title deed downstairs and we're paid what we're owed if there's any delinquencies. And they won't record it until those aren't paid, so.
The updated list, does it have the values? For, per building, per resident, for?
The map, the map has nothing to do with that, but?
Oh, it doesn't? Okay.
No.
Okay. It's just a map?
Yeah, it's a map. It, you know, shows the boundaries, the borders and property number assigned to it. Who owns it?
Yeah, but it's the map we're talking about, the one that's on the website?
Yes.
But that does have values on it from the cards.
So why do you think there are values in the map?
Sure, on the side. If I put in my address?
The appraised value.
It's gonna, you can pull up my card.
Okay, but it's appraised value, not like what it sold for.
No, that's what I mean, the appraised value of the, it, so it does have that information on me.
Yeah, but like, like say, say you sold your house and with the $350,000, I don't think it's, the map doesn't update that it sold for $350,000, I don't believe. I don't think so. I don't know, I never knows. I've only used it for finding locations and people and boundaries.
Right, right. That's, that may be a separate.
But it says on here that we're paying $20. If property record cards, including building sketches are provided, the client shall pay an additional $20. Well, those cards, that's what they include. If I pulled a card, so.
Right, if you pull a card, but?
Yeah, but they're saying, why, why would we be paying them if they're not putting it on the website? If they're not putting it with the map? Cause they don't have anything to do with anything else.
Well, that's for building if it's, like, somebody puts a garage on their property.
I don't think so.
It says building added or changed. So if the footprint of the property has changed, that's what they're, they're telling you the $20 is for.
If property added or changed. Oh, you can't even.
The fee, the $20 fee is for an update.
Right. Like if your property, like, say you had a one-car garage and you put up a three-bay garage, that's changed. They charge you $20 to make that update.
That's just the update.
But, so when they go through this time and reappraised though, let's say they decide you have four, determine you have four bathrooms and two bedrooms and that, that should be all updated.
Well, they're not going inside the houses, so.
No. They're not gonna go inside any houses.
Yeah. Unless someone wants to let them in.
Well, I mean, I just think those appraisals, huh?
Just for the appraisal, so are they gonna do it?
They're just gonna look at the outside of your house and appraise your house.
Take the old information. And what if somebody's remodeled? They won't know.
The map isn't even on the website now.
I don't want to rat hole here, I just was curious. But I just wondered if somebody had completely remodeled the inside of the house and the footage hasn't changed.
Right.
The appraisal, I would assume, would be different.
They said they have, the people can allow them not to go in their house.
Well, last?
They're not going into, they're not going to every house. I mean, they're going around to every house, but they're not going inside.
Well, not being appraised for tax purposes, but a realtor may go in and have a different opinion on.
But you have the option of saying no.
Well, the map doesn't even work now. It's just said my address is invalid.
I don't think it, it, there's issues with it on the iPhone. You can go on my, like, my desktop, I go on it and get into it.
Well, one would think, as much as we're paying, and that this is what 90% of realtors and people are using, that it should be accessible on your phone.
Right, I know there was an issue with Apple. That's what somebody told me anyway, that you used Apple there.
And I thought when we got into the reappraisal, they were gonna use that GIS information. So that's why I was wondering, you know, if there's, it was gonna be seamless where they could access it back and forth.
Yeah, cause I think they're working all together right now between the assessors and the software company.
Maybe that's why you can't access it, cause?
Well, we're not in reappraisal though, so.
No, but that, that data entry was supposed to start this year.
Yeah.
In April? Would it be April?
Well, I think it was supposed to have started back in '24. You know, the conversion, you know, to Patriot and converting the data.
Right, right, okay.
Alright, what's the pleasure of the board? It doesn't seem like we have an option anyway. It, it's, it just, I don't know. I think this whole reappraisal thing, well, I know you have, we have to do it, particularly from the tax standpoint. Just the amount of money we're paying them just to come and look at the outside of your house for taxing purposes is, we, we could've had someone in town do that. I mean, honestly, it's a little, anyway. So the total cost of the contract is? $1,400? Is that what we're looking at?
And then $20 for change.
And then 20, yeah. So $1,400.
$1,400 and then the $3,000 for the website.
But it doesn't, does it say that on here?
$1,400 is the one that we pay quarterly. That jumped up to $350, I believe.
On the last page it does, the $1,400.
Yeah. Okay. Pleasure of the board, motion?
So moved. I don't think we have much change, chance of.
Second?
Second.
I have the original here, first signatures.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I still don't see what it says about the website fee on here, on this one. Now, how am I just, I'm the only one missing that?
No, it only mentions the $1,400.
Okay.
Which doesn't make sense if it's a contract.
Huh?
The $1,400 is quarterly?
No, no, that's the total. But we pay quarterly, quarterly.
Quarterly, yeah.
So there's a separate contract then for the web?
That's just a one-time fee. Like, that was, I believe, the $3,000 is from your original contract.
Oh, so as long as we stay with them?
Yeah, like when we got into Tyler Technologies, we had the contract with them. So you just have one contract. So that's what we did with them. And then they bill us quarterly for the maintenance.
Gotcha. Okay.
So I have, can I give that to you?
No. I have.
That's yours.
Yeah, are we printing and signing?
I think you just sign it. If you need it, I can put you next to it.
I don't know what I do with my agenda. I said, I don't know what I do with my agenda. I don't know, I could over here, either way. Alright, while that's going around, oh, um, so I'd ask Judy to put this on to invite the, our senators and Representative Alicia to a board meeting. I think there's a lot of things, and I know they're still on the wall up in Montpelier, but there are several bells up there that could have fiscal impact on us. And I think it's, personally, I think it's a good idea to make them come, talk to you, and, you know, let them know how it would impact our community. They're supposed to be representing us. And if we don't talk to them, then they're just going off their own, you know, ideals. So, um.
Sign after me or you start another one?
I know they're, they're back most, a lot of times, like, today they're here because they're going to Slate Valley Annual Meeting. So if we could just, and they don't all have to come together. If Alicia doesn't come at the same time, House is doing different things in Senate. But I just think, and even if they just joined us virtually, I still think it's a good idea just to have a conversation with them. They, I mean, they should be reaching out to us to have a conversation, in my opinion. But they never do.
I like that idea because even with our sewer plant, we can just talk to them about, you know, with, with the sludge. And just remind them of issues that we are having firsthand.
And there is, there is a bill up in the legislature right now that's discussing landfills. So it's kind of, you wanna put them on their radar to do something about it.
Yeah, it's an opportunity to firsthand.
Yeah.
Dave Weeks is coming to annual meeting. But he's the only one that I'm aware of. I know she's not coming, because?
She's probably in Pittsburgh.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I get that. And, I, I mean, I don't expect them all to be here together, but I do think, you know, you should be checking in. You know, there's a lot of stuff. There's, there's a lot of stuff going on up there. And the amount of bills that, I mean, there are some senators, I feel like that they will just co-sign any bill.
Yeah.
I mean, you look at who is sponsoring your bill, you're just like, this person must just sit and sign their name all day long.
So I tell him he, he is gonna speak at town meeting just to give a little update.
Sure. Yeah. So if you could, I mean, we could speak to him that Monday also, but, you know, reach out to the other two and to Alicia. And, you know, like I said, they can join us virtually. So there's, you know, that should be easy enough for them. And even if they are just providing us an update of things that they think that are, you know, questionable, that are on their radar, things they think that are moving along, in case, you know, we've missed it. So we can be aware and follow along. I mean, there's so much stuff going on up there. I mean, education, I watch and listen every single day. And it's, like, it's, one day they're like, oh, we're not gonna do anything. And the next day, they've written a bill. It's just like, okay.
I know there's a fundraiser over at Franklin's on the 29th of March, you know, and there's supposed to be representatives over there.
Yeah.
8:30 in the morning.
Yeah. But it would be nice just to have them come and talk, just specifically about Procter. I mean, you know, selfishly, that's, that's who we're representing and, and that's who we, we should be speaking to them about in terms of, you know, you know, they like to create a lot of policies. Policies come with mandates. Mandates come with fiscal impacts, so. Alright. Alright, motion would be in order to move into the Board of Water Commissioners at 6:15.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Alright, in your pocket you had the three handouts.
And I try, I, I keep updating these like every day, cause they change constantly.
Or two handouts, I guess.
Yeah, two handouts. So I tried to show ones, just, and the only reason it's April, like, 1st and 8th is just to give the guys time to, you know, find curb stop, shut them off, you know, go on to the next group. But since I've done this, we've had, on the second group, there have been some that have made payments. So they had agreements. And so I've taken them off the list for now, cause they're, some of these figures show what they owe currently, but they get billed in July, but they're not due now till this year. So that amount has to come off of the delinquent. It's on the way, like, you could say, this is what you owe currently, but you can't, there's, there's delinquent and then there is overdue. So the overdue amount, the delinquent part, has interest and penalties also tacked on. So they could owe $1,000, but every single month, those fees get tacked on. So like, if I, like, by me sending letters out this week, next week, they're gonna be delinquent in the next, the payments. You know what I mean? Like, if you, if you send it out at the end of the month and they haven't paid those that month, the next month, they're gonna be even more delinquent.
But it would be broken down, wouldn't that, like, a date, as of this date? This is?
Right, like, if I, but that's what I'm saying. Then I just gotta issue, that's the hard part about it. Like, I could say, we're sending out letters in March and you owe $1,000. And then they get the letter and they have 30 days to pay it. Well, by the time that date comes, they are already, oh, the current payment. So that delinquent amount is no longer accurate. It's like $265 more. You know what I mean? Cause they haven't paid that.
So in the second grouping, if they had an agreement and they've come, I, I mean, they're in this grouping, cause they've broken the agreement, right?
Different top ones have agreements. Bottom ones don't all have agreements.
So if people came in and paid in the second group, what does that do for them?
They have, they should come and pay and do an agreement if they don't have one.
And if they've only come and paid and not done an agreement, what does that do for them? How does that change them being in the second group for shut offs? Does it change them?
Um, well, it depends on how much they pay on it. And then if they say, well, I paid on it, I'm gonna keep paying more. I, they won't come, they don't come to me. They go downstairs and they pay. So it's, it, it's difficult to track them down and say, hey, you gotta do an agreement. Otherwise, you know, but they think they come in and pay, then they're, they're paying and then?
So let's say I owe $2,300.
Okay.
And I came in and I paid $300.
Okay.
But I don't have an agreement.
Right.
Am I still staying in the second April 8 shut off? Or because I've paid $300 and I said, yeah, I'll be in in two weeks to pay again?
Right.
Have I come off the list?
Right. No. I mean, you're not gonna get shut off, but I gotta wait till the next month to see if you come in and pay again.
But if I haven't signed an agreement, what difference does it make what I say?
Because you're delinquent. If you come in, pay $300, and the next month you don't pay, you're still delinquent, so then?
Right, so I'm just saying, it, what difference, the $300, I should still be on the shut off list.
Well, yeah, you are on the shut off list. But you're not gonna get shut off until I know the next month if you're paying again.
I guess, I think if they don't have a letter, then they're, they stay in the delinquent pile. I thought that was, or an agreement. I thought that was the entire premise. Otherwise, I don't understand them.
They are always on the list. You never come off the list unless you pay.
Yeah, but you could live on the list for eternity and pay dribs and drabs and not be shut off.
Only if you pay every month.
If it's listed in the, whatever the agreement says, right?
But there is, these don't have?
But they don't, they haven't signed an agreement.
Well, they should.
I know, but they don't.
I, I mean, and even when you look over here where people have paid, there's no continuity to it.
No.
Even with the amounts paid, there's no continuity to it.
And the thing is, like, with this, I'd have to go down every single week and check to see who's paid. It, it's, it's not easy checks and balances, you know? Like, here's my list, tell me when these people come in. It's, sometime I don't get that information.
They pay downstairs. When they pay, is there a spreadsheet of some kind that updates with a date?
Not unless they update it manually.
Yeah, I would think that's the only way to do it though, right?
Right, I know, but it doesn't always happen, is what I'm saying.
I know, but I feel like that's the problem. I can look on here and there are people who have bought houses and moved into town, and they've never paid water and sewer. I mean, or, or they've paid such minimal amounts that they've paid just enough that we don't turn them off.
Right.
Judy, the first, the first sheet is, well?
The boulder sheet?
The bigger, that one is ones that I have to send letters to that they're delinquent. And that they have to, and when I send it, we, I say in there that you have to come in, you either have to pay this balance in full, the delinquent amount in full, or sign an agreement.
Okay. Well, like, I see, like, say, number three on the bold sheet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is also listed on the?
Yeah, that's, that was just an error. I cut, I took them off one list and put them on another.
Okay.
That, that amount is, is current, that is what currently is due. Delinquent is like $3,800, I think. $33.
I'm just wondering, and I, I don't know how, what they do when they, how they operate down there. When they get paid, you update a spreadsheet, it's got a date?
They just go into their account and mark it paid.
Just mark it paid. It's not listed, there's not a running list of, so you would know. I don't know if it would make it easier, that's, I guess, is my question. Would it make it easier? Cause you're saying you don't know when, when they came in and paid, they don't, it's hard to keep track of. What would make it easier to keep track?
If I just had this list behind me when they came in, they just let me know that these people paid, so I know they're current.
Well, and also, if they've signed an agreement, doesn't the agreement say how much? Like, you're gonna pay $550? So how do they know when someone comes in if they've paid?
I give them a copy of the agreement.
Yeah, it'd be nice on this list here, if we had maybe another column with how much they've paid to, you know, to date, maybe?
I don't know. I guess, my feeling is, if they don't sign an agreement, even if they come in and pay, they, they have nothing in place.
Right.
They're still delinquent.
But I don't know.
If I was delinquent at the bank and I went and paid $300 and I said, well, I'll be back next week and pay $300, I don't think that's gonna stop if they're in the process of foreclosure or something like that.
Right.
So, to me, too many of them do not have agreements. And they should go to the shut off list, even if you paid this month.
Well, the majority, anybody who was sent, anybody who was delinquent before last year, all those people pretty much have an agreement. All these other ones that said, send a letter, don't have, they're new to this list. So they don't have agreements.
Yeah. But all these people that say they have an agreement have all broken it. Haven't they? I mean, there's no, if I, if I had an agreement?
Well, I'm gonna, okay, from now on, I'm, I'm gonna eliminate the payment. You guys don't need to know about the payments, okay?
That's fine.
I'm gonna eliminate that column. All you need to know is if they have an agreement and if they've broken it. And if so, are they gonna be shut off?
That's fine.
So what I need to do is, when I send these letters out, I have no way of knowing, like, I just assume I've sent a letter out, they're gonna get shut off on April 1st. I have to run back and go through all of these accounts again to see if anything's been paid or get downstairs and ask them to run a report for me to show that, who's been paid and who hasn't.
So on April 1st, that, to know if any of them have paid in full?
Yeah. And by the agreement, and I know some of these people haven't, they've paid and they keep paying, and I, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be reasonable with them. I know things cost money. I know things are expensive. They're trying to make it go. If they didn't pay for winter months and they're trying to make a payment each month now, it's hard for me to go, I'm shutting you off. You know, I try to at least give the benefit of the doubt to pay everything up. These are pretty much some chronic ones here. I've sent letters to the top ones already. I've heard from only one of them.
Yeah, I, I mean, and granted, it's cause we have the information this time, but if you paid last April and then you paid in July and you haven't paid again, you've got some issues. I don't care whether you have an agreement in place or not.
Right. Oh, I know.
But when I look at that payment schedule, again, I wonder, you know, what their payments are. But who's to say that I come in today and, well, I'm gonna give you three months' worth of payments rather than coming in for the next two months? I'm just gonna give you today's and the next two months. So, you know, I could triple it, triple, you know, my payment. And then, next month you won't see me. And then if you don't keep some type of records, you wouldn't know. You would just say, oh, they didn't come in this month and they didn't come in the following month. So, so I think we're, we're creating our own issues by not keeping some organized file, records of, of?
Well, it is organized if you pull a report every day. It's in there. So I could go into Nemrick every single day and look at someone's account and say, okay, yep, they did pay, they didn't pay, you know?
Okay, but?
So, but then I'm going back to the agreement too and say, okay, what did we agree on for the, the payment? You know, if they paid, say, $300 in November and I, and nothing in December and I say, oh, they didn't pay, but then you look back and the agreement was $150 a month, then they did pay. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do.
So it's not, it's not like there's a? Is there anything that the girls downstairs could do to help you?
Yeah, an Excel spreadsheet will keep track of that.
Do not have to? Yeah, mark the spreadsheet when they get, when they're paid. Well, I mean, well, couldn't they do that?
You know, then it's at a glance, it's right there. You just look at it and, then you don't have to do any work, Judy, that.
I know. I know.
You know, that's too much to ask you to do.
Right, you wouldn't.
Every one of those accounts, pull them up.
Well, I know, cause like I've sent letters and then I go, oh, I'm sending letters, oh, no, they paid, they came in and paid. So, so who, who's responsible to ask them to?
So it seems, it seems like you need, we need to have like set dates of when. The report's gonna be run, like you're gonna run it, or you're gonna run it every five days, the fifth, the tenth, the fifteenth. And like that, and then, because you've got to determine in, in, at what point in the month then. Are you sending a letter out, or. You're handcuffed till the next month.
Right.
You're right, and if there was a due date, like you said, due dates, whether it's every five days, it's a due date.
Well, it's due within the month, it's due within the month.
But I mean, running the report.
Right, so you could just run it on the.
Right, but when you do the report.
First of every month.
Do a report every fifth day, and you've got one due date. For everybody that's delinquent, say it's the fifteenth of every month. You're gonna be able to pull that up and you're gonna see, this one's paid, this one's not, this one's paid, this one's not. Soon as they come in and pay, you get a date right on there, paid on this date, so now they're good until the following, you don't have to chase it. They're already good until, if they did not do that.
You couldn't do a, you'd have to do it on a spreadsheet, you'd have to create a manual spreadsheet to do it that way.
Yes.
Otherwise, you're going into the system and you're looking up every single account that's on these two pages.
That's too much.
And seeing every month.
But it's not just these, it's every account in town.
Yeah, like, this is just the top, the cream of the crop.
But this is a thing.
Besides these.
Is there a master list?
There's a list of all the accounts, yeah.
Should be a master list and then a column that would show delinquent.
It does.
Right, delinquent?
Yeah.
And then a due date. So do, if there's an agreement, there.
No, that doesn't, it just shows agreement, it doesn't have any kind, it, it doesn't allow for any information in the system to put, like, due one hundred fifty, four hundred dollars.
I don't, it ju- it just seems like that we're kinda going down that path again where they're getting. Big, you know, where, at one point they had fallen off and, and now it's. You know, again, it, it is at that point where, I mean, some of them are. Good amounts.
I know, and some of those, I, I said, are also the current ones.
No, no, I know, but, but even if it's the current in there, it's still what they owe, that, that's still a chunk of change, just to owe on.
It's still at least a year's worth of.
Yeah.
Charges.
And if you're delinquent and you're behind on the current, come July one, you're probably going to just be.
Yep.
Another year behind, so. Yeah, I don't know, I, maybe starting to shut off, that sometimes starts that trend that people.
Well, I mean, I guess I can be tougher in that I just keep a ta- a tally myself as well and say. Every, and every week, bring it down to them and just say, let me know if any of these people have paid. And then, if a month is missed, they've missed it.
Yeah. I mean.
Well, it's good, eh, you have to do something like that, cause it's gonna get their attention, whether you end up having to do it or not. It's just gonna get their attention, they're gonna see that it's, it's just not gonna get overlooked.
Right.
Easily as they may hope, or whatever might be going on.
Well, most people, like last year, when I, like, when I was sending letters out, they were coming in and doing agreements with me, you know?
Yeah.
Um, it's just, it's like, oh, I couldn't make it that month, or I could, you know, and it's just. And then they don't realize the interest is every month, you know, so if they owe a thousand dollars and they paid in September and they didn't in October. That interest is, you know, it, it accumulates every single month on that balance, so. You could pay the hundred, and by the next two months, if you don't pay, you're gonna have interest on top of it.
It's at, it gets to that point where there's.
Yeah, it's like a credit card.
And because it's seasonal, is there no, I mean, if you wanted to shut something off in the middle of February, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Eh, April.
April to November, or, uh, end of October.
And only certain days of the week do, at certain hours.
Yeah, you can't do it on a Friday.
October thirty-first, April first to October thirty-first.
Day before holiday.
And you only can only shut them off eight AM to two PM.
So maybe if we just start doing that and focus on, just on, on the two batches here. And maybe, I mean, it's a pain in the tuchus, but you're gonna have to do that. You know, like, did they pay?
Yeah.
Did they pay anything, if they didn't pay once, so when April first comes, that Kyle, this is the list, boom.
Yep.
So.
So I'll just, I'll update this one list for everybody next.
Yeah.
Next meeting, and all I'll do is put on here whether or not they have an agreement, if they've responded to the letter. And then what their.
If they're current.
If they're current on their agreement, if they have an agreement.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, sometime people will come in and just pay it off. You know?
Well, it's good then.
Well, and maybe this time of year, cause you're getting taxes, so.
But it's just amazing, I send all those letters and like one person calls me.
Yeah.
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 And that was, I, I basically wanted to say, this is a courtesy letter, I could just come April one and shut your water off. And you have to pay it in full.
Yeah. Well.
If you broke the agreement.
If it's out there, they'll, gets your attention now.
Right.
Yeah, and it's a drag to have to do that, because then there's a fee to turn it back on too.
Yeah.
So, you know. But at some point, something has to happen, because for all of the, the masks. That is paying and paying, you know, and staying current, these people are just. Riding.
I know.
So. And then what happens is, if people think nothing's gonna happen, then all of a sudden you get two more, three more.
Yeah.
So.
It's amazing, it's, I don't know why they act like they don't have to pay water and sewer, I really don't know, it's.
Yeah. And I think we're probably kinder than a lot of communities, I think a lot of places are.
Yeah.
Much.
Yeah.
I'm sure Rutland was not as.
They never used to shut, they didn't shut water off, I don't believe.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so they, they decided a few, a few years back that they were gonna start again.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's not my favorite part of the job.
Well, I'm sure, it's, it's, it's not fun, cause you're dealing with people you know, and you have to hear whatever, you know. The reasoning is, but the reality is, if, if we all operated like this, we wouldn't be operating a system. So.
Well, unless there's a, a hardship of some kind brought to your attention for whatever reason.
Right.
Then there really is no excuse.
Right.
Yeah.
Right?
And once they have an agreement, you know, like, and they can't make it, they can always go to the board of water pushers, so hey, hey.
I know, but a lot of these that are on here, even, I mean, we helped clean up all their accounts and everything during COVID.
Right.
And when all that money was out there, and they've allowed it to just cycle through again, so.
Plus they have to stay current, so, besides paying their agreement.
Yeah. So, all right. Albert.
Just one more question, cause I think you brought it up, Lisa, was, uh, about curb stop issues. I don't know, you know, if, if somewhere down in the not-too-distant future, we'll get, uh, a rapport about. Places that don't have curb stops?
Well, we're on, some of the, most of these are on here.
I see, you know, one, I thought, didn't have one on Eight Cliff Street. But I see it's, it's yes now, so.
Yeah.
I don't see any issues with curb stops, I assume that we have.
Yeah, and we don't, I mean, I don't have like a list of, it's, it's when they need to get shut off, we look for them, and if we can't find one, then we do.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's a lot of them that are like on property, you know, like next to the house, you know, odd places, um. That one there that we shut off last year. It had ever been, it was so old that when they shut it off, it basically.
Broke.
Uh, yeah, and then it turned into.
Yeah.
And it was way out, it was in, in the front yard of someone else's property.
Yeah.
The appraisers, maybe the appraisers can do this.
Oh.
You can't even see curb stops on most people's property.
For a price, maybe, uh, I.
They can do every property, they can determine whether it's got a curb stop.
Right.
Uh, yeah.
Now, they're in strange places and some streets are.
Takes that equipment to.
All.
Figure out where it is.
Pipes run together, there's no curb stop.
Yeah, cause they should be flush. They, eh, I mean, it should be flush with the.
I think mine yard, it sticks up like this high.
Shouldn't.
We went, looked at it, yeah, this week, that's up on, uh, Primary Street, the pipe's about this high off the ground.
Ours has, over the years, ended up, it's probably that high.
Really?
Yeah.
The thing is, this one has a pipe and they were concerned of a casella hitting it. But there's a sign in front of it, and I said, well, they're gonna hit the sign, you've hit the pipe.
Hmm.
But Kyle unscrewed it, and the shut off is down below the ground. So I don't know why they kept the pipe up so high, but the shut off is below the ground.
Oh, yeah, it's gotta be.
So I don't know why they.
Yeah, I don't know how they.
They capped it, you know, it had a cap on the top.
I don't know how you would correct that, I mean, it'd be nice if.
You could just cut them. When they did ours up in Chatterton Park.
Yeah.
Ours stuck up for the longest time.
Yeah.
And they put on our property when they redid the project, but.
Would Kyle come down?
Corliss came out and cut it and fixed it.
Act guys would.
Yeah.
Can you make a note of that? I mean, I don't know, Rob. I, I just don't want it to get damaged.
On bottom of my list, Jay.
Yeah. Well, that'll be, that'll be a summertime of.
Well, they'll pay your bill and they'll come see ya.
All right. I'll put my bill, I'll, I'll make the list here.
Put your bill on hold and you'll, you'll rise to the top.
Yeah, I'm surprised, I showed Kyle that, I was surprised he didn't mention he could just cut it.
Yeah, I probably don't want to.
Yeah, right, yeah, but you talk about the location of those curb stops, you know, my front porch has got a slab of marble. Right there underneath the steps, and when they did Park Street, you know, I had a switch that galvanized. Guess where the curb stop was?
Underneath that.
Underneath that slab of marble.
Yeah.
And what they did is they drilled an eight-inch hole and they put a steel plate.
Yeah.
Where they drilled it, so they could get access to it, but everybody was a little surprised that, its location, it's weird.
Some are hard to, we had to shut water off on a house at South Street last week, and, uh. So I think the pipes burst, cause there was no heat. And, uh, but he found that one right off, and it was like right at the edge, so he was like, glad about that.
Yeah. Yeah, we had, what, three houses on Gorn Bridge Road, and they were all hooked to one. One shut off, and then it branched out to three houses. That took years to, we just got that done last year.
Yeah. Yeah, cause there was a delinquent one, we couldn't do anything about it.
Yeah.
We shut everybody, that's what happens, there's a lot of streets like that, they're all hooked up together.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll, we'll generate a new report, I don't think we need, hmm, probably not, maybe not. You want it, you want it for March? March is like a heavy meeting, you've gotta reappoint and, um.
Second one in March?
Yeah, let's do that, and that way we'll know going forward for April one.
Right.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen and kinda the path we're on.
Okay.
So, second meeting in March. Okay, uh, motion would be in order to move out of board of water into sewer.
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I don't think we need to go over delinquent again. We could just go right to the engineer.
Okay, so I met with, uh, we met with Aldrich and Elliot, uh, on the twelve. And he, uh, he wants to amend the plan to change the ultraviolet disinfection component. Uh, a final was sent to the state for review, the whole plan. Uh, the Vermont Clean Water State Revolving Funk Grant application was due that Friday, and he sent me a copy. And he submitted it on Friday to the state, so that's for some funding through them. Um, we're also gonna be working on the USDA grant, uh, that's April fifteenth, the deadline, and that's the one that we had trouble with. Um, having access to, so he sent me a link today to, of someone to get in touch with, so we'll set that up, then we'll. We can't go and apply for that one until we actually have the bond approval, so, we need that first. Uh, they're gonna do a PowerPoint for the town meeting, uh, which will be briefer than the overview they shared with us. He was very detailed, but it was, it was great though, um, and it's a state requirement to have an open floor meeting. Um, for them to do this project, so, so that covers that piece of it. Uh, bid package is going out next week, uh, for the sludge removal, uh, with the removal to take place this summer. There's about three locations where sludge can be brought. Uh, and that's also when I mentioned to you about the, the legislature about landfills for sludge, that's being discussed up there, so. We gotta poke our representatives and senators to say, you know, pay close attention to this and do something for us, so. There are about, I think, three locations, he said that, that they're looking at for where the sludge can be removed. Uh, the next few weeks, they're gonna be contacting a vendor to check the buildings for asbestos. So, um, what they'll do is they'll, they'll find somebody, but then I'll deal directly with them, so. They don't wanna be in the loop about getting billed for that and then paying through the, so they'll just bill us directly. Uh, end of August will be done about ninety percent with the final design and ready to go out for bids for the liners and airlines. And, uh, because of funding, certain specs need to be either matched to the existing, so when there's equipment and stuff. They need to either match what is exactly there or come to the very close, um, seconds. That's, so they're putting in the same type of stuff, and the project is to be completed by December of twenty twenty-six. So, uh, I asked him about the sludge removal, if it's charged to us by weight or by volume, and he said, weight. But it's a dry weight, so they bring a company in, they extract all of the, um, the sludge, yeah. In through this machine, like, you, you explained it, it's like a clothes dryer. And it goes on spin really fast, so it gets all the moisture, the water out, so then it's just the dry sludge that's being removed, so.
That's good.
Which is much better than wet sludge, cause.
That'd be heavy, um, and you said that they're mending the plan to, for what, for the ultraviolet?
Ultraviolet.
To include that?
No, it, it was part of it, but I think they wanna change what they had originally in the plan to a different system, so. Uh, and then, what else is there? I think that pretty much. Covers everything. They did the envi- environmental, um, document too, and he sent me a copy of that, so that's been submitted to the state. Um, and then he did reference, uh.
So it doesn't seem like there's been any, like, hiccups along the way, like.
No, no, nothing at all really, and he did, um. He asked me about permitting through the town, if there's any permits that we might need to do for that. Uh, because of the location of the wastewater treatment plant and all that, and I said, I wasn't aware of anything, because basically.
You're not changing anything.
Isn't changing, and any, any permits I would think that we need would be through the state, not, not local, so.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, and he's come, is there just one or two coming for the?
I don't know if he'll bring someone else with him or not, but he's definitely gonna be there, so, so we'll just need the screen probably down.
Um, um, yeah, we don't do the screen, we have the others pieces we, we bring out. So, did you, I thought you already spoke to her about using that, the permethium boards.
Yeah.
No? Okay.
No.
Well, when you fill out to, when we fill out the form to use the building, we'll just say that we need the permethium board.
All right, we have to, we fill out a form to use that for a annual meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, just like the school fills out a form to go skating, yeah.
Interesting, okay. Uh, so, who, does Celia fill that out?
Uh, usually, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna mention two of them.
It's just that they'll be used for.
Right, I just wanna mention about the screen, or whatever they put up.
Yeah. So that we'll just need that, and they're, they're gonna be bringing their laptop, I'm guessing. All right, anything else for sewer? They can move out of sewer at six fifty. Um. Um, yeah, Sheriff's Report, any questions about Sheriff's Report? Concerns, it'd be nice if the sheriff just. Concerns, it'd be nice if the sheriff just swing by like Monday night, maybe just, uh, hey.
Oh.
At town meeting, usually he does.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, but I mean. Any other questions about the report? Concerns?
No.
Alright, and I'm thinking your report pretty much was wastewater.
Yeah, I didn't include, I put that on there and then I didn't include it, cause most of it was about the wastewater treatment plant, and then, uh, just a couple complaints I've gotten about people parking on streets, a couple streets in town. Uh, so, I mean, one is no parking, and they continue to park there.
What are, what are the streets?
Kane Street.
Oh.
And Park Street.
Oh.
Um, so I reached out to the sheriff just to make them aware of that, if they can go around and check.
But Park Street is not a no parking?
Um, well, I feel like, I was trying to check when we changed, do you remember when we talked about that?
And we didn't change it.
We didn't change it with the, for them, okay, but they can't park there all night, so.
They can't park there all night?
Yeah. These people are up the street, they're not right in front of the school. You can't.
Oh.
And you can't, it's not supposed to park on the sidewalks anyway, but they're parking there and blocking other people's driveways and.
Oh, well, that's a whole different thing, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but we, we didn't change that when you were going through the ordinance, we had a long conversation about that.
Very long.
You did, so we didn't change it.
So what a question on, uh, something different here, the, uh, vehicle break-ins.
Uh huh.
You see on social media, people, is there any updates on any of that? Is, do, do they ever investigate? Are they finding anybody? Are they doing?
I mean, only, it's like if it's in the report that they had a break-in to a vehicle or something, they might include it in there, but I never hear back on if they found anybody or anything.
Yeah, I didn't know if they came back and said, look, because it's the town, we found.
Yeah, no.
You know, we're investigating, you know, certain.
Yes, no, I never hear back, I mean, once in a while, they'll stop in and kinda give me updates on different things around town.
Yeah.
But they never do about like the vehicle break-ins and if they.
Yeah, you know, I mean, say, hear about it a lot, every once in a while, you'll see somebody.
Yeah.
Host about.
Post something that, yeah, they've been lurking around the driveway again, we saw them, we got a video and.
Right, and to, to the, to the thief's credit, they do a lot of lurking and it, it's mostly the, been kept capturing them, just looking into the cars, cause I think people are starting to realize, keep your doors locked.
Right, if they, yeah, if they see it locked, then they walk off, I guess, I don't, I don't know.
Walk off, yeah.
But you never hear anybody being caught, you never hear of anybody being investigated.
No, no, I mean, a lot of people, like you said, on social media, get them on their ring, you know, and stuff, so they get video of them. The thing is, is, is the only thing they say to share with everybody is lock your car.
Yeah.
You know, when someone says, my wife or my husband or my car got broken into last night, they rummaged through it and it wasn't locked. I'm not saying that's, they have the right to do that, but lock it, at least, you know, that's at least.
Prevent it, I'm just wondering if the sheriffs or anybody are sitting up, you know, somewhere watching, are they catching anybody, are they doing, do they report back to say, we've got?
Unless you've got a video showing it and people go, oh, I know who that person is, cause that's what they'll do, like in Rutland. And people have videos, they post them, and then people go, oh, that's so-and-so, you know, they mentioned their name, and then the cops will go after them.
Alright.
But for the most part.
You know, they're not on at night, you know, usually.
Yeah, they're not on late.
Okay. Yeah, I just hear it.
Right. Has any been that, well, you did that down in your area at one point.
Well, they were, yeah, every once in a while, it's like you forget, and then you hear it again, and then it's a week later, you're, somebody's posting East Street or South Street or Patch Street, and.
Yeah.
They've been, you know, they've got tracks in the snow and they're.
Yeah.
There's never any.
You really can't, it's awful hard to track footprints, you know?
Right.
But I didn't, yeah, I wasn't sure if they were.
Yeah.
You know, let the dogs loose on these guys, you know, whoever it is at some point.
Fire a shotgun at them.
Yeah, I think so.
Then you'll be going to jail.
That just happened in Vermont, that seventy-seven-year-old guy, he fired that shotgun in the air.
Yeah.
Did he get arrested?
Yes.
Yeah.
He got arrested, he's being charged.
Yeah.
Discharging.
Yeah.
And one day I looked out and I, from upstairs, I could see footprints out to the front of my lawn halfway through and then back, and I'm like, that's kinda creepy and weird. And then I was telling the girls about it, the next day I realized it was me. Cause I had gone out to this bird feeder and I was like, aw, stupid. So I caught them, Jay, I caught them.
Yeah, so it's you.
She was practicing.
Alright, anything else, any other, uh, featured gender items? Alright, so town meeting starts at seven o'clock?
Yep.
Um, so get there a couple minutes early, bring your book. Do we have any extra books to put out or no?
There's some downstairs.
Okay. Um.
Monday, Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Monday, Monday. Um, and I think that, I mean, I think the A and E guys that are coming to give the presentation, let them answer all those questions, I mean, anything we would answer is information that would have come from them, so it.
That's right.
Seems kind of, you know, circular there, you might as well let it be a primary source to answer. Um, and then I think probably a lot of other, I mean, a lot of things, um, financials and like that are probably gonna, you know, if those questions come, fall to you, so. I, I mean.
It's the board's meeting, the me, questions go to the board to answer.
Well, it's not, I mean.
And Celia won't be there, so.
The, really, the questions are only under the first article where you ask the reports of the, the select board. The report should, the question should be about the annual report, that's what we're presenting. So it shouldn't be really, I mean, I think we talked about this before, the one question that always comes back if you go back and read gear here, what streets are you thinking about paving? It's always a good idea, I just think to have that, I mean, and, um, you know, I, I'm sure there's gonna be questions about, you know, well, funding, how do you know? When will we know and all that, and, you know, it's one of those things, like you said, we have to have a positive bond vote before we can know, and and you hope, like, if you're applying to USDA, that there's still money there.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, who knows?
Yes, that's right.
The government, the government's scheduled to shut down, what, Mar- April, no, March fourteenth, or something like that, so.
And like I said, I might just do like a quick, like synopsis of, you know, things that are going on in town and we're dealing with and all that stuff, so.
And just have a handout?
No, just.
Oh, just to have, yeah, yeah.
An overview, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think that's the worst idea.
Yeah.
So, cause I think, you know, for a lot of people, that's kinda where they're getting the bulk of their information, so.
Yep.
Yeah, you know, um, or, you know, upcoming projects that we anticipate that, you know, you and Kyle have kinda thought about.
Yeah.
Going forward for, so, okay.
Sure, people wanna know, well, my road's gonna be paved.
Yeah.
You know, next year, and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's usually the biggest question or.
Or maybe the logging up on.
Yeah.
Beaver Pond.
I'm meeting with him too, um, I'm hoping next week, but we're gonna talk about that, and we're also talking about Chittenden, so, the forester, so.
So it'd probably be a good idea, I would have that dollar amount.
Yep.
And just kinda, you know, where that money goes, what it, things like that, so. Uh, cause a lot of people don't understand about the logging of the money and like that, so. Okay, anything else? Everybody's ready? Big meeting? You never get, hopefully it'll be calm and, um.
Cold night.
Huh?
It's gonna be a cold night.
A cold.
It's like twenty.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's always hot in the gym though. Um, and then the next day, if you're not on, well, even though everyone's running unopposed, right, but, um, people, as a select board member, you're also, you can come and vote, or come and help count as Board of Civil Authority.
Yeah.
Right? So, that's always helpful. So, okay.
It shouldn't be a lot of ballots, I would think, there's no major, I mean, the bond is probably the biggest thing, but there's no major elections, you know, I mean, like.
Yeah, well, everything's basically unopposed.
Yeah.
So, it's just all the right is.
Presidents or, yeah.
Yeah. So, and all the school stuff will go on a separate thing, so, okay. Alright, uh, motion.
Can I just say one thing?
Yeah.
That, uh, the forest management plan that we were given, that's twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-nine, so that's a ten-year forest management plan. You know, and that was done by our previous forester, Hutchins.
Right.
The only thing is, and I can remember when he came to our meeting, he said that this, the copies that we had wasn't signed by the county forester, but there's probably a signed copy by the county.
It was signed afterward, after the fact, when I got this new forester, he, he.
Okay, good, you know, so we do have, you know, a forest management plan that goes till twenty twenty-nine in Chittenden.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then it was supposed to be, the harvest was up to twenty twenty-two, I think he said, but he said there's leeway there. He said, we're still in a good state, we're okay, so we're gonna, yeah, that would be nice though, to harvest some of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, uh, motion would be in order at seven oh one to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.